Oh, man. We are back. Mr. Crable, you ready to do this thing, brother?
Let's get it.
Let's do it. What it do KTTV? This is KT and I'm coming at you live with another episode of Education Unleashed, but not just any episode. This is season three, the opener, and why would I come on tonight without bringing out some of the best in education to do it? So I have my guest tonight, Mr. AJ Crable. How you doing tonight, brother?
Hey, I'm so happy to be here. Thanks so much for having me.
Look, man, I am glad that you are in the building. We got a lot going on tonight. Like I say, we took a little time off. Um, I do a few podcasts because it is a media company. Uh, so then just want to get back to this education, man, where it all started. I said, why not go in and talk about what you love, man, and just get people involved? Uh, because there's so much going on in education. I was looking at the news that I wanted to talk to tonight, and it's all about us, brothers, black brothers in education, trying to make it happen, man. So, um, I want to say thank you for taking some time out the busy schedule of what you doing, uh, to just come on, man, and kind of give us some of the information and a little bit about your journey tonight. So I appreciate you, brother.
Well, and I appreciate, you know, your just commitment to, you know, how do we lift up what's working? How do we lift up positivity? How do we lift up black excellence? And so I'm just proud to be a part of it tonight.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And so, uh, what I like to do, um, before we get into the interview, I want to kind of go through a little news. And where are you located? I know, I know the number's five, one, two. Are you down in Austin?
No, H town.
Oh, H town. Bam, there we go. So, uh, you know, what made me think about that, uh, you know, thinking about that time in TA, I was looking and, uh, Dr. Mays, our superintendent is, uh, what is it, Tillison? Uh, down there. Yeah. So they have, um, I was looking at something they have, and it says, Austin program aims to get black men into education. And so Houston Tillison University aims to diversify classrooms by offering free education degrees to black men. So they say with only, man, I look, just came out two days ago. So with all the 1.3% of US teachers being black males, true, uh, this program partners with Austin ISD to foster cultural understanding and enrich student experiences, man. What a way for us to start tonight, then by celebrating some news like that, right?
Well, there is some evidence out there in the research literature, and what it seems to suggest is that when young children coming up see at least one educator who looks like them, one educator who they feel a strong sense of kind of connection with, who has an understanding of their journey, uh, that something about, something about that activates something, you know, their child around, their willingness to, you know, persevere and demonstrate, you know, the grit necessary. You know, education is, it's a sacred thing, but, but education is a struggle, like learning, just how to like pronounce c- at, c- at, like you can get really discouraged in the face of that. Um, and so there's something important about relationship. There's something important about having a sense of belonging, a sense of connection that will help me as a student persevere in the moments when, you know, the educational process is a little bit challenging, where maybe I don't learn fractions the very first time. And so I gotta persevere through that. I gotta be strong in the face of that. And so something about relationships seems to make a difference, something around a sense of belonging connection seems to make a difference. And so while I'm not clear, um, that the research literature makes explicitly clear, what I take from the evidence is that when students see at least one educator who looks like them, um, and that they feel like they have a sense of identity with, that something about that seems to, to spur that sense of relationship, that sense of connectedness, that sense of belonging, um, and allows our young people to persevere. And so, um, the, the more that we can have our, you know, folks in our faculty who look like folks in our, in our classrooms, I think the better.
Most definitely, man. I was just in, uh, my aspiring principals class yesterday, and so, uh, our social superintendent, um, uh, Mr. McDonald came in, you know, and I, and I told him between him and Dr. Mays, when you think about aspiring to be those leaders, right, and what we look to do, what better way than seeing people who look like me? Because a lot of the times, we don't achieve because we can't be what we never see.
Yeah.
You know? And so, so, so powerful, man. So I just want to say once again, man. Man, thank you for taking that time, man. Uh, so, um, and just jumping into things, first off, for the people that don't know you, brother, can you give us a little bit of information, I guess, about your background, man? Some of the work all the way from TA to, uh, your work in DeSoto. And, uh, shout out to Coach Lindsay. I don't know if you know Antonisha, her name, Antonisha Lindsay, chief of Texas A&amp;M, track champion, shot putter, but rep the Soto ISD. She was, she did a few things down there too, so big shouts out. But yeah, man, please give us a little bit of background about you, man.
No, uh, yeah, so DeSoto has definitely, uh, been on the map lately. Our girls won, um, basketball championship last year. Our boys won, uh, football championship for the past couple of years. Um, but what I'm probably most proud of is that, you know, a few years ago, especially as we're coming into the pandemic, you know, DeSoto, um, we, we were in the struggle. Um, and that showed up financially, it showed up, um, in terms of the supports that we provided for our teachers that were inadequate. Um, it showed up in the boardroom and governance that wasn't intensely focused on student outcomes. And so when you put all that together, it certainly showed up in academics, uh, where, you know, we had ratings that didn't really reflect what our students and teachers, uh, were capable of. And so one of the things I'm most proud of is over these past three years that I've had the opportunity to serve, uh, in DeSoto, um, that, you know, we have seen a resurgence. We've seen, um, improvements financially. We've seen improvements in terms of the teacher supports that we provide, so our teachers are receiving better supports overall today than they were, uh, two years ago. Um, we've seen, uh, significant improvements in governance, where the, the board is intensely focused, where at least half of the time each month is focused on, are our children learning? What evidence is there that our children are learning? And then, not surprisingly, as the adults have become more and more focused and aligned, that we've seen improvements, um, in the ratings of our schools and in the literacy and numeracy of our students. And so, uh, really, um, really proud of just the hard work, uh, that our faculty and staff, uh, and our students have done, and grateful that it has shown up, um, when you look at the actual data, that you've seen significant gains, uh, for our children, that, that we're creating the context for them to live lives of choice and to be able to advocate for themselves and to create, uh, lives of meaning and intentionality for themselves and for their families and their loved ones. And, uh, and one of the things we said early on, you know, when I arrived in DeSoto three years ago, like if, if black children can't be great in DeSoto, exactly where can they be great at? Like, and, and really kind of guided by that mantra from one of our former board chairs, um, you know, from, uh, Deandrea Fleming, like if, if, if we've got, uh, largely African-American faculty, we've got 75% of our students African-American, we've got, um, or 65% of students African-American, uh, we've got African-American, majority African-American board members, African-American, you know, faculty, African-American superintendent, like if, if, if black children can't be great here, where can they be great? And people really rallied around that in the board and the superintendent's team and have really, really made a real difference.
Most definitely, most definitely, man. And so thinking about, uh, coming in three years ago, so what kind of, what were you doing, I guess, a little bit before DeSoto? And then what kind of shifted the focus to say, hey, I think DeSoto is next for me?
Yeah, uh, before DeSoto, I was at the state agency. I was with the Texas Education Agency, uh, for a number of years. Um, and had just a really wide-ranging portfolio of things that I supported, um, from things like supporting our school improvement team. So when schools were struggling across the state, uh, it was, uh, our team who would show up and try to work with them to help them, uh, lift themselves up and, and really grow and make sure that we were getting the supports they needed. I also supported the investigations team. So if somebody was on some shady stuff somewhere, you know, it was my squad who was coming through, you know, and saying, hey, are we gonna get this right for children? Like, how are we gonna make this right? Um, you know, the charter schools, our enforcement, our waivers, there's so many different parts of the nuts and bolts of the agency that I had the privilege of helping support. And so that was a real growth opportunity for me. I, I learned so much more about what happens in public education and why did it happen? And where are there weaknesses that we need to work on? Um, and where are there strengths that we need to protect and things that we need to leverage? Like, there's a, there's a lot of voices out here that, um, have a very, a vision for what public education should look like that is very different from my own. Um, and being able to serve in a state agency allowed me to see it from a bunch of different perspectives and figure out how best to fight for, um, having local, locally-controlled public education that is really creating the best outcomes for children. And so I'm, I'm grateful for that. Um, prior to that, um, I actually was serving on, uh, my own local school board before that. And, um, it was through seeing education through that lens that I really started to get a passion for education, the policy perspective. Before that, I was, uh, serving as an interventionist and really working with schools to help, uh, deploy student-led restorative practices where, uh, we really were training students to be able to lead community circles and mediation circles, um, and restorative circles. So that when little, when, you know, little AJ, little Kev are having some type of beef, instead of, let's just suspend both of y'all, go home for five days and see if that magically sorts it out. Instead, can we create a conversation, really get at what's going on, and can we try to come up with a, a strategy or plan to keep y'all in school, uh, but allows us to actually address the root cause behind the drama, rather than just address the symptoms of the drama?
Yeah, man, it's so awesome that you say, you know, all, all the work that you were serving, but then to be able to sit on that school board, right? So it's one thing, man, to be, to come in and be the, I guess, the, like you say, to investigate or, or to be the school improvement person, and everybody tense up. But when you sitting on that board, man, and you are really making those decisions, um, you know, for the teachers that are, are within side of their respective, uh, district, man, that is really ground zero of making it happen, you know? I think about Dr. Bro, uh, our board president, uh, you know, just how about seeing her just go through so many pieces and, and really just, you know, just, just fighting, man, like from being school board member of the year for so many years.
She's impressive. I've been a fan for a long time.
Yes, man, I love that lady. I'll tell you, anytime, she, she comes through for me. So, um, when I think about the board, man, and tonight is all about that school board excellence, uh, if you can talk a little bit about that time when you were on the school board, what were some of the key principles, uh, that you believe, uh, contributed to that school board's success? And really, in your opinion, I guess, starting now, what is an effective school board even look like?
Yeah, uh, and that question is really important, because if we're not clear about what does effectiveness look like, then whatever we do next probably ain't gonna be that. Um, and so to, to have a clear vision for what, what does greatness on behalf of the children we try to serve, what is, what does that greatness look like? If you don't start with that, then it's hard to ever get to that. I actually lacked that when I joined, uh, my local school board, that I, I didn't actually understand what it looked like to govern effectively. I, I knew what it looked like to level on children and to try to be in schools and kind of make a difference for children, hands-on directly with a child. But it's a whole different thing to say, we're gonna govern a school system, where what we're doing is we're trying to look at, how do we create the conditions across an entire school system? I, I didn't know how to do that. I thought I knew what I was talking about, but to be honest, I can tell you right here, just, you know, I didn't know what I was doing when I joined the board. Um, and so it took, uh, just like by the grace of God, uh, some right people coming in my life and resources, um, and me getting educated about what is the job that the community had already hired me to do. And what I arrived at then, I didn't quite have the language I have for today, but essentially, the shift that I made was from being adult inputs focused to being student outcomes focused. Like that, that was the key shift, that, that instead of all of my intention being on what are the things that a school system does, shifting, you know, and books, buses, breakfast, you know, uh, all of the things that have to be in place just to make the school system run, I shifted from that being my focus to, is the school system creating the result that it exists to create? And, and the realization there is that school systems don't exist to provide bus transportation to children. That's not why the school system exists. Now, you do that because you need little AJ to show up at school, and so instead of bus to pick him up is gonna facilitate that. But the school system doesn't exist to transport little AJ to school. If we transport little AJ to school, that doesn't mean that he is now magically able to read. And, and so I, I had to shift my thinking from, what are the adult inputs in the system? What are the things the adults are doing to, is any of this actually causing a difference in the lives of our children? Is any of this actually causing our children to grow in what they know and are able to do? And it's, the school systems don't exist to have a balanced budget. Uh, when it comes to, you know, the taxpayers' dollars, I'm very conservative about that. I want to make sure the taxpayers are getting their money's worth, that we're not wasting people's money, because people already know have enough money. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna use it for tax purposes, that we need to use it wisely, invest it wisely, and we need to serve children effectively with it. And so I always was looking like, hey, we, we should have a balanced budget, we should have a balanced budget. The shift from adult inputs focus recognizes school systems don't exist to have a balanced budget. Now, there, there's wisdom in having one, and I still advocate for that. But even if we have a balanced budget, that doesn't mean that little AJ is now magically numerating, that, that he could actually, you know, go out and count well enough to be effective in whatever job he wants to pursue. Like, that's, it's important, it's necessary, but it's insufficient, because it's not why school systems exist. School systems exist to improve student outcomes. And so as a board member, I've got to orient my thinking first and foremost around, what are the things I want students to know and be able to do? And how are we measuring that that is happening? And then, only from that lens, do we then look at all the adult inputs? Do we then look at, okay, is the budget aligned with improving these student outcomes? Then we look at, is that transportation plan aligned with improving these student outcomes? Is our food service plan aligned with improving these student outcomes? And so that shift was the big shift I, that I had to make, um, and that I, that's not where I was when I joined the board, but that's, that's where I slowly got to. That's certainly, uh, what I preach and advocate for today is to encourage school boards to make this shift from being so focused on what's happening with the adults, that we're not focused on, is it actually making a difference for children? And so adults could be good, like, you know, adults could be great, but that doesn't mean the children are learning. And so let, let's focus first on, are the children learning the things that we want for them to learn as a community, that our community wants our children to know and be able to do? And then we align everything else with that. So that was the big shift that I had to make in order to try to move in the direction of greatness on behalf of the students that we serve.
Yeah, most definitely. Sounds like you, um, you went in and kind of shifted and, and kind of like that teacher, you say, always begin with the end in mind.
That's right.
So then begin and working backwards.
That's, that's, that's exactly it. And, and, and it's saying, it sounds so simple, but I had completely missed that. Um, and so I was so focused on, oh, we gotta get these computers in these classrooms right, and we gotta have just the right this and just the right that. But I wasn't focused on, okay, if we do all that, but little AJ still doesn't have the knowledge of skills to be successful at the next level of learning, we, we ain't really done anything.
Yeah, look good, sound good.
Sounds good.
Like you say, he can't read.
Yeah, but he can't, yeah, man. But, but I'm good. I'm, I feel good about myself.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, man, come on. And so that's what, uh, birthed the book, Great on Their Back.
That's right, that's right. Uh, it's, I think it was a love letter to all the school board members who had the same passion for what's possible for children that I have, but who find themselves in the same position that I found myself in, unable to demonstrate the knowledge and skills necessary to live into that passion. Like, i- if you start to stroke out right now, as much as I want greatness for you, I do not have the skills to support you in this moment. Like, we need to go find somebody who has the medical training. So me wanting well for you isn't enough to cause well for you. That, that it, there's actually a set of knowledge, skill, and mindset that I have to have in order to actually be great on behalf of the students I serve. So just loving children isn't enough. And that's, and unfortunately, I think my children had to learn that the hard way, because I, I loved them intensely when I joined the board. That is necessary. Education is a business of love, that is necessary. But it is also insufficient, that I also have to have a, for myself as a leader, there's a set of knowledge, skills, and mindset that I have to have to be able to really make good on that love that I have for our children. This book really is that. It's, it's my way of trying to, to pass on the things that I wish I had been given on day one, so that other people can have it on day one, so they can fully make manifest, you know, the, the passion in their heart for really being transformative in the lives of children.
And you said a mouthful of that, of me wanting great for you. It's not enough to cause.
Not enough. It's not enough.
Man, that's powerful right there, man. Golly, but, all right, that's the first soundbite we're going with, right there from the quotes. Hey, man, so when you thinking about that work, uh, as a reform advocate, uh, thinking about the time in TA, all of the pieces of what you're doing now, what initiatives or policies do you believe were crucial for bringing, I guess, a, a positive change to that system?
Yeah, so the, the way that I think about this in my mind is that there are two key levers that we have to pull on. And if we're not pulling on one of these, then whatever we're doing probably ain't gonna work out. That either we are increasing the quality of instruction that students are experiencing. So we're increasing the quality of instruction that they're experiencing, uh, or we're increasing the quantity of quality instruction that they're experiencing. Those are two main levers, uh, that we want to pull on. Um, and there's a lot of ways to do those, but my sense is if one of those isn't happening, if we're not increasing the quality of instruction that students are experiencing, and we're not increasing the quantity of quality instruction they're experiencing, that whatever we're doing probably ain't gonna, ain't gonna work out. And, and so I'm constantly looking for, what are the things that have the largest impact on increasing the quality, the quantity of quality instruction that students are experiencing? For me, I lean into two areas, uh, I, I would say I leaned into three areas more than anything else. Uh, one area that I lean into, uh, more than anything else is, because the research points out, the single most important, uh, variable that school systems control, um, regarding the quality of instruction, is the effectiveness of your teachers. And so anything that you can do, uh, to lift up teachers, anything that you can do to support teachers, anything that you can do to inspire, uh, and really could, set them up for success, to be great in their craft, and to constantly be growing in their craft, anything you could do in that area, that's, that's gonna have the largest impact, um, period. You know, that, that's, that's really, it's really the end of the conversation. Like, if, if you could only do one thing, that would be it. How do we lift up teachers and set them up to be as powerful in their craft as they can possibly be? And how do we bend all of the resources off of the institution toward that endeavor? So that's, that's the first, most important thing. The second thing I'd say, research tends to bear out in terms of, if we're trying to increase the quality of instruction, is we increase the quality of instructional materials. If there are things that I want little AJ to learn, but the materials that I put in front of him don't contain any of that, then he probably ain't gonna learn it. And so it's one thing to have, uh, the highly effective learner, then you pair that with high-quality instructional materials, uh, that really make it as easy as possible for the learner to learn and for the educator to educate. Uh, that's a big deal. There, there's a lot of times, you know, you know, where we've just really provided poor instructional materials to teachers, we've set them up to fail. Teachers, however, uh, quickly sniff that out, and so they start to look around for other resources. And that's why you see, you know, folks on like Pinterest and Teacher Pay Teacher and all these other sites trying to track down resources. That should never be necessary. That describes a failure of the school system to provide teachers what they need. Teachers shouldn't be spending their nights and weekends trying to track down instructional materials. That's the school system's job. The school system should, like, teachers should be spending their nights and weekends preferably with their own families, you know, not spending, you know, all this time and lesson planning and all those things. Like, if they want to, then do so, but they shouldn't have to. That is a failure of the school system. Um, and so that's the second thing I would focus on is instruction, um, is instructional materials. And then the third thing that I would focus on, from a policy perspective, and it's partially just because it's near and dear to my heart, because it's what I've done for a long time, is the student-led restorative practices. The, the, the third piece I would highlight is that the more motivated the learner is, uh, the more they will be able to access the quality instruction that's placed before them. So you can have really high-quality instruction and high-quality instructional materials, but a little AJ, I'm just feeling hard-headed today. I ain't trying to hear no one what you gotta say. Then, you know, that's kind of like, you know, pearls before swine type situation, where you could be putting really greatness out there, but I'm not, I'm actively rejecting it. And so part of the reason I'm so invested in student-led restorative practices is, I, I want students to play a leadership role in creating a culture and climate in their schools that is really geared toward their greatness. Uh, I don't think it's sufficient to have adults be trying, we will never police our way to greatness, uh, that you can't do that in a community, you certainly can't do that in a school. What you can do is you can give children the tools to generate, uh, a culture and climate that really lends to their educational greatness. And, and the more that we do that, I, I believe the more that we set our students up for success, and frankly, I think we set our adults up for success, because they're not constantly trying to play, you know, cop and everything else. They can really focus on our instruction. And so that's the third thing that's really meaningful to me is, you know, how are we deploying, uh, not merely restorative practices, but student-led restorative practice? How are we investing in the tools that are young people that they can really, um, address conflict when it arises? Like, if, the problem is, if, you know, little AJ, little Kev, that they, if they go out and have a conflict, and they don't have the tools to solve it, then they gotta wait for me to show up as the adult to solve it. But if we can give them tools to solve their own stuff, then not only will they be able to solve tomorrow's conflict, but then they'll be able to solve the conflict after that, and the conflict after that. And maybe they get their skills up, then when their friends have a conflict, maybe I can go help my friends resolve their conflict. That is a very different school environment when students can lead in that way, rather than it's 100% on the adults to sort that out. And so that's the third thing. You know, first, you know, how are we supporting teachers? Like, that is first, that's the first and last job. If we do nothing else, do that. Then second, you know, how do we provide them with high-quality instructional material? And third, you know, how do we deploy student-led restorative practices? Those are the three things that I'm most, uh, just kind of animated and inspired around.
Yeah, most definitely. And when, when I think about those, uh, restorative practices, so I, I remember in ALEAF, when they first introduced it, they give you a little card, and they say, well, if something happens, you're gonna ask these four questions, right, and kind of go through that. But once again, that was me showing up in the middle of that conflict, and I'm solving it, quote unquote. But the kid is just answering, and I was in elementary, so they really didn't even have the tools to really coherently answer the questions.
Right.
So when you think about that student-led, um, now I'm in high school, right? And so is this something where you seen put into place in elementary all the way up?
Oh, oh, so absolutely.
Or there's a certain, okay? And so, if you can, kind of talk to me about what that looks like.
Yeah, um, so right now I'm working with four high schools that are out of state. Um, I've worked extensively with, uh, one of our middle schools here in HISD, and previously, the youngest group of students that I've personally trained have been fifth graders. Um, and so I've seen this at high school, middle school, and elementary. Um, and so while it certainly looks different, because it has to be developmentally appropriate, you gotta adapt it a little bit for the different age groups. Fundamentally, the conversation is the same. Like, when issues come up, how do we give students the tools and the vocabulary and the structures to be able to work through that? Because to the point that you just made, when, you know, if you're a student, I'm a student, and there's a third student, and you and this other student are having whatever difficulty, if I can come in and help you to navigate that, not only do you two have the tools of having worked through that, but I also have some different tools for myself, having helped you navigate through it. And so that's part of why it's so important to me. Like, I don't, I don't want our students to have to sit around and wait for adults to show up. I want them to have the tools they need. And part of the reason this is so important to me, again, isn't even specific to the school. Uh, the, the way I explained to my high school is like, look, if you think there's some fools in your high school right now, guess what? When you leave up out of here, they gonna follow you. There will be fools wherever you go. And either you will have the tools necessary to be able to navigate that and to be able to, you know, show up with grace and, uh, show up with generosity. Uh, either you will have the tools to do that when you leave high school, or you will still lack those tools, and you will still need them when you get to college, and when you get to career, and you get to military and everywhere else. And so I see those as essential skills of how do I work collaboratively with people? How, how do I, uh, communicate effectively with people? I see those as critical skills that students need to be successful wherever they go after high school. And if we don't invest in them those skills in high school, and somehow they leave without them, they are gonna struggle in whatever happens next, because that kid that was driving on your last nerve when you was in high school, wherever you go, they following you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and they don't have the tools. So once again, it's hard, man. What we'll do, uh, I want to kind of get into a little bit of, because we gotta talk about this award, man, the James Bryant. Kind of, so what I'm gonna do, I want to take a quick break, uh, because, you know, you, you kept it so, so humble and modest in the beginning, right? But we talking about Leadership Institute, uh, we talking about the Director of Governance. I, I want to kind of get a little bit into that, man, a- as we get through. So we'll take a break and then come right there, and, and kind of talk about some of that. Hold on, y'all, we'll be right back. All right, y'all, welcome back to the inaugural season three podcast with AJ Crable. What do you say? AJ is. Hey, what do you say? AJ is Abel. Thank you so much for that, man. All right, uh, shameless plug real quick. If you have not went out and got a pencil, it's the least of my worries. Y'all need to make sure y'all go get that, man. You know, I did have to go in and uh, I do a lot of work with boys' clubs, uh, young men. And so I, I realize sometimes we get so caught up in the specifics and, and, and making sure that we got our pencils and things. And, and a lot of times I haven't eaten since yesterday. So some days a pencil is the least of my worries. Just a quick shameless plug for that. But back to the man of the hour, man. So leadership faculty at the Leadership Institute in Nevada, man. When you're thinking about going from Texas, looking at your work through T E A, talking about DeSoto, but even in Nevada, man, what insights or skills did you find most valuable that you were kind of able to take from that Nevada and bring to the Texas that kind of transferred over?
Yeah, um, the, the Leadership Institute um has, spends a lot of its energy trying to figure out how do we prepare our next generation of public education leaders? So how do we prepare principals? How do we prepare superintendents and, and other leaders? And more recently, you know, how, how do we also prepare board members as well? And so it's done just this really intentional work of trying to identify what is, what are the knowledge, skills, and mindsets that folks need in order to be effective at leading in these capacities? And this is part of the work that I've been able to do uh with the institute is really drilling down into what are the practices, what are the habits of mind that I need to adopt for myself as a leader? What are the ways that I need to be focused on how I show up and focused on who I'm being in the moment? And, and one of the learnings uh that uh I've really tried to lean into and that is a core part of my work with the institute is uh who is first, who am I being in the moment? So am, am I showing up? Is, i- am I being generous? Is that who I'm being in the moment or am I being real stingy with folks? And, and I don't mean that, you know, money-wise. I mean, like generosity of spirit. Like, am, if you're having a bad day, am I being generous about that? You know what? I bet that brother's having a struggle. Let me check in on what, or how I can support him in that. Or am I being stingy? Is who I'm being in the moment stingy? You know, he's having a bad day, but he don't understand my day is harder than his day is. You know, one of these is who I'm being in the moment is generous, or who I'm being in the moment is stingy. And so really trying to get present to how am I showing up in the moment? Recognizing that who I'm choosing to be in the moment is having an impact on others and how they choose to show up in the moment. That, that I can show up in an empowering way, who I can be, can be empowering in the moment. And even as others struggle, can pull them into their own power, or who I can be, it could be disempowering in the moment. That you already down and let me go ahead and drop that elbow and just make it even worse. Who I'm being in the moment is a critical aspect of leadership. But then, one of the things that's powerful is that, is to take that one step further. This is much more advanced conversation, um, you know, that we have is who am I being that they are in this moment? And uh, am I being that they are uh in the, in the moment? Like what are the attributes I'm assigning to them? As, as a leader, when I see you struggling, who am I being that you are? Am I being that you are incompetent? Am I being that you are lazy? Or am I being that you are struggling and need support? Am I being the, that you are committed and are just having an off day? So it's, it's both about who am I being? How am I showing up? But then what is the frame that I am creating for you? Who am I being that you are in the moment? And am I, am I, am I being that who you are is possibility? Or am I being that who you are is an impediment? And then I start showing up and treating you like impediment rather than treating you like possibility. And that increase in this leadership perspective, that's gonna increase the likelihood that you, whether intentionally or unintentionally, start living into that uh, that, that I'm creating about you. And this isn't, this is critical for education leaders, because this isn't just true for adults. This is incredibly true for our students. So first, when little AJ is struggling, who am I being in the moment? Am I being, you know, supportive? Am I being uh kind? Am I being open? Am I being generous? Um, you know, am I being patient? Who am I being in the moment? But also what matters as an education leader, who am I being that little AJ is? Am I being that he is a, a problem? Little AJ is a problem. Is that who I'm being that he is? Or am I being that little AJ is possibility? Yeah, but that he's in a struggle. Um, and my job is to help be that bridge over the struggle. Right? And so often it, who I'm being is going to be decisive. But who I'm being that my students are is, is going to create either an empowering context for them to step into or a disempowering context in which we continue to blame them for adult decisions.
Most definitely, most definitely, man. Wow. That was powerful right there. You know, the only thing kept coming to my head, I, I looked at a clip yesterday. And, and I can't remember the lady's name, but she said, think about three adjectives, right? Three adjectives that you want people to remember you or know you by, right? And then how do those adjectives as a leader line up with the values of the district uh where you working at, right? And so how do they all go together? Uh, and so as you said, like who am I showing up to be? That was that one piece. But then I have to take it a step further, right? When I think about those struggling teachers, like how am I showing up as who they are? Do I see them as incompetent or do I see them as that person? Because when we think about our students and their self-fulfilling prophecy, right?
Exactly.
You gonna turn into.
Gonna live into it. And, and that's on me. I created that. I created that. Absolutely.
Man, that's powerful, man. So now thinking about the James Bryan Cunnitt Award. First off, for the people that don't know, what is this award, man? And how did your contributions uh shape that landscape uh to just leaving the legacy surrounding that award?
I actually don't think I've ever um talked about this um in an interview. So first, um, the Education Commission of the States is a national kind of quasi-governmental body uh that really works with state governments all across the nation to try to support and grow and implement uh public education. And so it's not officially a part of the Federal Department of Education, but it's kind of an intermediary of source organization that's looking at what are best practices? What are some of the most effective things happening in public education nationwide? And how are we disseminating that to as many states as possible? Um, and so in service of that, uh, the Education Commission of the States has an annual award for who has made some of the most significant contributions to public education at scale, at a national level. Who's taken some really amazing ideas that have worked in one place and helped to try to spread that to other states across the country? So, so there are a lot of people who are doing really amazing things in their particular school, but maybe it hasn't spread to multiple schools or multiple states. Because I was working in the state agency, I just happened to be um in a position that some of the amazing work that was happening at the agency uh that I think I get a disproportionate amount of credit for, just because I was in a leadership role at the time. Um, but some of the work that we did um has really not only made a difference across Texas, um, but some of the governance work that we've done has now been replicated in a few other states. And so you see um more and more states starting to do work that's similar to the Lone Star Governance Work that uh we initiated uh here in Texas and have been, it's slowly grown across the nation. It's for that work that um our entire team was honored. And in fact, uh, when I went there uh to the National Gather, the Conference to um receive the award, um, I actually took a bunch of uh team members with me. And so I, I wasn't just me on stage. You know, I brought, you know, a whole group of the team up on stage as well, so that we could uh be honored collectively.
Yeah, man. So, look, when I tell you, uh, you know, when you think about T E A, right? You think about all these people who never be inside the classroom. When you think about all this, you know, so it's, it's so awesome just to be able to kind of put like a face and, and the humanizing part.
That is, um, when I was at the agency, I think, um, at its largest, I think my team was about a hundred folks. And of those, if I had to guess just off the dome, probably eighty-five of them have been classroom teachers. Um, and so overwhelmingly, uh, you know, T E A, uh, when I was there, and I suspect to this day, overwhelmingly populated with Texas teachers, Texas principals, uh, sprinkled in with a few Texas superintendents as well. And so that's uh pretty much the norm. In fact, what I'd see a lot of is folks would be at a school district. Um, they'd leave the district, go to T E A for a few years, kind of pick up, learn whatever there is, and then turn around and go back to school districts. And so if you look around the state, there were probably thousands of people who are working in school districts today who at some point in their career did a few years of T E A, learned about education from those uh state perspective, and then uh turned around. And I'm, I'm an, I'm an exemplar of that. Uh, I did my time at the agency and then uh turned around and spent three years uh supporting uh the work we were doing in uh DeSoto. Um, of really trying to go from being involved in public education leadership at a state level to being involved in public education leadership at a local level. So that is, that is fairly common. So yeah, I realize it's, it's super easy to see T E A is the great other. And especially in moments like this where, um, you know, here are kind of embroiled in a uh intervention uh from the agency, that, that it's, that I, I don't fault folks for kind of seeing T A as, you know, kind of the, you know, the, the boogeyman of sorts. Um, but the, the people of T E A, um, it's worth noting overwhelmingly, uh, Texas educators um, who have the same heart and passion for kids that everybody else has, um, and are probably gonna do a few years of the agency and then will probably be back in a classroom next door to you.
Yeah, probably. Look, that much needed though, right? Because when you go out there and get that, uh, then you've moved around, you've seen how other schools do it, you've helped improve other schools do it.
Exactly.
What you bring back is so powerful.
Because you've seen it from a bunch of different contexts. And that's part of the challenge. If I'm, if I've only been in my school, you know, I've spent my first five years as a teacher at this one school, then I know how this one school does it. And so there are things that this school does better than everybody else, but there are also things that this school just don't do that well. Um, and so getting to see some of these other perspectives, I, I think is a, a powerful professional development opportunity for the teachers and assistant principals and principals who spend, like I said, two or three, four years at the agency before heading back to an I S D.
Most definitely, man. So as we get ready to land this plane with the interview, you know, it's coming to that time. We got our aspiring leaders out here. One of them, man, like I said, I was in my aspiring principals class yesterday. Uh, what advice, as we close out, would you give to aspiring educational leaders? And what do you envision for the future of education?
Yeah, part, part of the challenge is, um, and again, this goes back to some of my early learnings, is that it is so easy to get focused on the adult inputs and lose track of the focus on student outcomes. It's so easy to attach um my sense of accomplishment to the adult inputs. Did we put in place these things that we said we put in place? Um, and for most of the staff of a district, I think that's perfectly fine. But once you step into leadership, and, and the further and further down the road of education leadership that you walk, the more and more crucial it becomes that you are attaching your identity and your sense of accomplishment and completion to our children actually learning, not just did we implement the strategy, uh, the adult strategy that we said we implement? It's not enough to, hey, well, I said we're gonna implement this new reading curriculum and we implemented this new reading curriculum. That, and that's, and once you have stepped into the role of education leadership, that's, that's necessary but insufficient. That your sense of accomplishment has to be grounded in, not did we implement the reading curriculum, did little AJ actually learn how to read? And to the extent that your students learn how to read, then that means great, uh, job well done. And if students didn't learn how to read, that means great. We've learned something and now we know to make some pivot and make some adjustments. And so this isn't about beating people up, you know, when learning hasn't happened the way, that's, that's not the point. The point is continuous improvement. The same thing we want for our students, the same thing we want our teachers, this, this is just continuous improvement. The moment I see, uh, wh- when the teacher gives the quiz at the end of the week and notices that little AJ didn't learn all the stuff that the teacher taught on Monday and Tuesday, the teacher doesn't say, man, I'm just a horrible person. No, the teacher's like, oh, got it. All the other students got it. Little AJ didn't get it. So what am I gonna do to reteach for little AJ? And, and then how are we gonna, you know, get him where he needs to be and then we keep it moving? And so it's just about continuous improvement. Take that same spirit of clarity into your, whatever level of leadership you aspire to. Uh, but uh attach it to, are my students actually learning? What is it that I want my students to know and be able to do? You know, they learning and that needs to be the centerpiece. And I can't be satisfied when I've implemented a strategy. I have to be satisfied when I see, did the strategy actually work to improve student outcomes? And so keeping that clarity of mind at whatever level of leadership that folks aspire into, I think is just really, really essential, because it's so easy to get it, what, look, um, we served all the kids lunch on time, we good, we did our job. Or we, we got all the kids to school, you know, in under forty-five minute bus ride, we good, we did our job. It's so easy to attach um a heightened sense of meaning to the adult inputs. And I'm not saying those aren't necessary. Those, those are obviously blatantly necessary. They're just insufficient, because that's not why school systems exist. School systems exist for one reason and one reason only. That's to cause improvements in what our students know and are able to do, to really cause students to learn so they can live a life of agency. And if we haven't done that, then we haven't done the job.
Powerful, powerful interview tonight. Thank, thank you so much for that. Uh, dude, dude, I, I just, you know, being able to talk, man, and, and see what you do, but then come on and just hear what you do, uh, the experience that you had, so very powerful, man. I'm so grateful uh for you even taking out the time for this. Uh, looking forward to replaying this. I'm telling you, uh, the next day I always kind of internalize what we talk about. Uh, because a lot of the times, these conversations show up in my interviews, right? A lot of times they show up in my writings. And I think that, that's like my cheat code, right? So I just wanted to say thank you. What we'll do is, uh, I wanna do a little rapid fire. So let's take a quick break. And then we will come back. We're gonna do a quick rapid fire, y'all. Look, I hope y'all enjoy that. Hey, we'll be right back. Uh, hey, welcome back. Another, 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 another great interview, Education Unleashed. We are back, y'all, the opening Season Three Interview Podcast. I wanna say thank you, Mr. Crable. But, uh, let's get to this rapid fire. All right, man. Quick ten questions. Don't think about it, just give it to me, man. Favorite education book or art?
Uh, book, um, Nonviolent Communication by Marshall Rosenberg.
Oh, see, I be wanting to get into it, but this rapid, most memorable moment in your educational career?
Um, a mother giving me a letter at her daughter's graduation that basically said I had come to the conclusion that my daughter was going to, you know, die and be killed in violence because of her behavior. As a result of the work uh that y'all have done, I feel like I have hope that I've got my daughter back for the first time. And it was just, like, it just, it was everything. It was everything.
Wow, wow. One word to describe your leadership style?
Growing.
Growing. Hey, most definitely. Best advice you received as an educator?
Children, uh, adults are just really, really, really old children.
Man, I would have do. If not in education, what profession would you pursue?
Probably, um, something in the sciences. Uh, I've always wanted to, you know, low-key be an astronaut.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, there we go. Come on, man. Favorite educational quote?
Students, um, essentially this idea that students uh won't remember um what you did, what you said, they'll remember how you made them feel.
Made them feel. Come on, man. Morning personal night out?
Um, all of that.
Hey, haha, top three traits of an effective schoolboy member?
Um, persistence, uh, focus, humility.
Favorite educational technology, too?
Um, today, um, it's probably a toss-up between Chat G P T, I know controversially. Um, and there is a company here in town that makes a, a video coaching uh product where teachers can video part of their classroom and then have one of the online coaches watch it and pro, and provide them uh feedback. It's called S I B M E, S I B M E dot com, I think. Um, but really giving teachers one more tool to get feedback out. Um, but really giving teachers one more tool to get feedback outside of their normal observation feedback channels, outside of their normal evaluation channels.
Yeah, I didn't know they were here. One thing on your bucket list related to education?
Uh, I really want to, uh, spend some time in Finland. I've heard so much about their system and read about it, um, even though they look nothing like H I S D. Um, but I think there's something to learn from everybody and they've done some things that we've got to be able to learn from.
Oh, very powerful, man. That was it, man. Ten questions. Look, once again, I get to go back and replay this. I am definitely going to look at that book, uh, because it sound like it was something that I need in my life. All right, y'all. Uh, what we'll do, quick break, then when we get back, we will talk about what I do is I do an outstanding educator spotlight. And so, uh, I always like to celebrate teachers, um, and educators who are doing things on their campus. So when we get back, I got one. Hey, if you have not been to K T T V dot com, you see, we got merch, we got books, we got, there's all kinds of stuff on there. Y'all make sure y'all get plugged in. Now, outstanding educator spotlight, let's go. All right, tonight's outstanding educator spotlight goes to Ms. Allison Willoughby. And she was nominated by Ms. Elizabeth Robertson. So what the message was, uh, Ms. Elizabeth said, Allison is one of our tech specialists at Taylor High School. Let's go, Taylor. While she may not teach classes, she's played a vital role in getting things ready for twenty-one hundred of our kids to take the P A T test this week. Uh, she made sure that every computer was ready, moved heavy carts and laptops all over the building, put our files on testing days and did it all with a huge smile and without a complaint. She is amazing. And so the message was, Allison, there are no words to thank you for all you do. You are simply amazing. So big shouts out to.
Thank you, Allison. Thank you, thank you.
And so that's what it's about, man. Being able to, um, kind of celebrate those teachers.
That's right.
And being able to be, be, um, be a voice for them, man. And so I tell people, don't wait till I retire. Don't wait till I die. Tell me how good I was right.
Give the people their flowers today.
Please, please give my flowers, man. And so, uh, that's pretty much what I wanted to cover in that, man. And so as we get ready to land this plane, um, first off, man, tell us, how can we get the book? How can we know more about you, man? And what's next for you, uh, in this education game?
Yeah, um, uh, the book, if people can find, uh, uh, amazon.com or wherever books are sold, Barnes and Noble, wherever. Um, uh, but also, um, you can get a lot of the resources on our website at, uh, effectiveschoolboards.com. And all the resources from the book are freely available on the website. You just, and if you've got any school board members, they want to learn more about how, how they can really live into their aspiration for children. You know, go there, get whatever they need or shoot me an email. In, in terms of what's next, uh, the book that I'm working on, uh, that I'm really excited about, I, I think I probably won't get it done until near the end of the year, but I am specifically working on a book about the work that we've done in student led restorative practices. I, I, that is just the number one request I keep getting. And so I'm trying to honor that request by putting pen to paper and would love to try to get that out, uh, by about this time next year. And so that means I got to get it done this year, get it, uh, put together so that there's a easier guidebook so that more folks who really want to do this work of really providing stu- students with the tools necessary to engage in, uh, effectively in communication and, uh, in conflict and all those other things that, that they have an easy, uh, uh, easy reference manual for how to do that. There's a lot out there around adult led restorative practices. Uh, but what I'm really most drawn to is student led restorative practices.
Most definitely, man. I think, like you say, just putting that power back into their hands because, well, like I said, we can ask those questions. We can give them the sin and stems when they're in elementary to kind of say, oh, I felt this way. But when I can have you do that when I'm not even in the room, that is the powerful part, especially when I could teach you this at nine and 10 years old. And here you are seventeen, eighteen now doing it at your games or on your friends and.
Well, exactly. Because it's, it's one thing for them to have that, but you know, with little A.J. and, you know, little Ray Ray are off on the block and we're not there. Like then, the, we still need them to be effective, uh, in being able to navigate, you know, these interpersonal challenges. Like it can't just be that they can do that well when we're around. We, we've got to get them the skills so they can take it out into the community.
Hmm, most definitely, man. Well, I think that will do it for us tonight, Mr. Crable. I wanted to say again, man, thank you for taking some time out of the busy schedule. Such a wonderful interview, uh, and, uh, thank you for even riding with me, man, through my other segments. Uh, great pleasure. Anytime that you get ready to come back on, especially once you get through with the book, man, the invitation is open. We will make it happen. Hell, it, man, you could just come on, just talk, really, just talk about it. And man, so once again, man, thank you, uh, and I look forward to the work, uh, that's ahead of us in the future, man.
Dr. Thomas, thank you for your leadership and your message.
Yes, sir. I do appreciate it, man. All right, y'all. Podcast episode one, season three of Education Unleashed is a wrap. Thank you for everybody who tuned in. Make sure if you did not, go like, subscribe, share, click the bell, all of that good stuff they say at the end of YouTube videos. And I will see y'all for my next guest next Thursday, seven thirty. Make sure y'all be here. This is K T for K T T V signing out. One hundred.
This is Darnell with Broadcast Houston.
This is Dr. Tamara Beckford.
Hey, this is Candice.
This is London Underwood.
This is Kirsten Bass with Inner City Greens and you're watching.
Y'all are now tuned in to.
K T T V.
K T T V.
K T T V.
K T T V, is that right?